We get a signal from her saying it's up? Okay, this is a study session regarding Brisbane Baylands Planning Application, the Bayland Concept Plan, Brisbane Baylands Specific Plan, and General Plan Amendment Cases and Related Final Environmental Impact Report. Tonight, we're going to be discussing specific topics that include traffic, noise, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and related policy issues. While this is a... The study session is open to the public. The primary purpose is for the City Council to ask questions on the agenda topic, and public comment is encouraged at the 7:30 public hearing. So, we thought that maybe this might help make our meetings so they don't go into the late hour, so the council can kind of get some of their clarifications out of the way. But I'm sure as things go along with the public hearing, things do pop up, so we'll see how this works. This is the second time we've tried this. And currently, Mayor Lou and Councilmember Lance won't be joining us for this study session, but they should be here for the regular meeting at 7:30. So, this meeting is televised. And with that, it is a study session, so we don't need to adopt an agenda. And I think the microphones are portable, so if any member of the public wants to answer or ask a question and stuff like that, we can give them a microphone so that we can capture all this on audio as well as video. Okay, so who wants to start?
Well, again, there's no formal presentation. We would just open it up to the council for any questions you would have. We have a city engineer here, our traffic consultant, and our EIR consultant, as well as a secret counsel.
All right. Well, you know, I wasn't a military, and whenever we wanted to march, you always started out with your left, so my left is Terry.
Well, I'm going to say that right now, I'm having a little difficulty speaking because of some extremely recent dental work. I mean, like moments ago, dental work. So, I would like if you have questions to go ahead and start, because for me, I think that most of the questions that are going to be asked should be asked during a formal meeting. And so, I still have questions on how this study session really plays into the whole, you know, public record part of the Baylands. So, I'll leave it at that for the moment, because most of the questions, I think, we'd want to ask in the real meeting.
I think we could answer that question.
Clarification.
John, maybe you want to take a crack at that question? I mean, because it did come from a recommendation from the subcommittee of myself and Cliff.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, the spirit in which it was offered up was to maximize the time made available for the public for the... During the actual public hearing. And I think the concern was that some of those meetings, that once the council Q and A was over, that there was going to be... And the council's... The public's time to actually, you know, ask questions and make their comments was being truncated. So, that was the spirit in which it was offered. Anything that's brought up in these meetings, you know, in terms of the session, it's part of the official record. Again, tonight, it is televised, recorded. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, and every council member may have a different feeling about this, but then that was the spirit in which it was, you know, set up originally.
Madison, you want to...
I feel the exact same way that Terry does, and that's kind of why I didn't... One of the reasons why I didn't go to the last one, because I don't have, like, a huge list of questions. I have a few, and I feel like I'm grasping the content fairly well. So, I remember the last one on remediation, there were a couple of council members that had, like, very, very long... Like, a lot of questions for a very long time. And so, I could see how it would be beneficial to kind of get all those out, because a lot of them are... A lot of them were about really just, like, understanding the content of the material. For me, the questions that I'm going to be asking are not just really for my own knowledge, but they're mostly things that I think that the public would like to have answers to. And that's really normally why I ask them. Sometimes I kind of know the answer already, but I think it's important for the public to have it be a little bit more clarified for them. And I don't... I don't see the point of asking my questions now, and then, like, I'm going to repeat them all in an hour again, which I feel like will probably be actually wasting time to ask questions twice. So, for me, I wanted to show up, because, you know, we are a unified body, and I wanted to show support, and I wanted to... I wanted to be supportive, and so that's why I came. But my plan was just to kind of listen to what the other council members had to contribute, and maybe I would come up with questions on the spot. But my whole goal here tonight was really just to listen, so...
Okay. Well, this is going to be a short meeting.
Yep.
All right. So, that leaves it up to me, I guess, unless Terry wants to ask something afterwards. On a staff report, John, let's go to page, it looks like 4.8.7, or page 7, I guess you'd call it. And down in the second paragraph, it starts out, "EIR mitigation measure 4.0-4," says "requires Brisbane participation in constructing and funding regional transportation improvements identified in San Francisco by county transportation study." Can you talk a little bit more about exactly what that means, our participation in the funding on the study? Is that something, maybe, Randy, this probably falls in your purview as to what we're being asked here?
Sorry, I mean, there are two questions. One, are the level of improvements, maybe Randy can walk through, kind of what were those by-county improvements? And then, I think, the funding approach was spelled out in the by-county study, as well as sort of fair share based on demand and generation of traffic and whatnot.
Sure. So, the by-county transportation study, for the folks who don't recollect it, is a project that was started in the 1990s. And the whole premise for it was an understanding that there were a multitude of projects on the San Francisco County side, and a few on San Mateo County side, although ours were certainly one of the largest on this side of the county line. And we recognize that we're just going to impact each other. If we build a big project, it impacts San Francisco's transportation system, and if they build a couple of big projects, it impacts ours. So, it seemed like a good idea, particularly from the two congestion management agencies' perspective, that the entities that were going to be building these projects get together and start to talk about it and look at it. So, what the project really did was, over a period of, I guess I was involved in it for about a decade, it looked at projects that were on the horizon that were likely to be built, and very much like what you see here in the EIR, it looked at, what are the background conditions? What sort of traffic situations are we going to have in the future, even if none of these projects are built? What situation are we going to have if all of them are built? And let's try and look at an estimate of how much of that additional traffic is generated from each of the projects, and use that as a basis for determining how much each project, not necessarily the developer in and of itself, because as you all recall, the whole paradigm for funding has changed so much in the last 20 years. I mean, 20 years ago, if you were building a major project like the Candlestick Interchange, right off the top of your head, you could have said, okay, 50% of the money for that project's going to come from the feds, 25% of it's going to come from the states, and the other 25% is going to come from some mix of the developer, and you might have redevelopment, and you might have all that. But the premise was just to say, okay, that project in and of itself generates this percentage of projects, so it ought to be responsible for that. So, that's what was done. The project was actually completed and then updated a number of years ago, and then it's just been sitting on a shelf. So, we all have an understanding of generally what development projects are happening and what construction projects are really necessary to mitigate to the maximum extent possible the impacts from additional traffic.
Okay. Thank you for that. Go to page 8, under Transit Impacts, where it says with BART, says, "The additional transit ridership resulting from the proposed Baylands development scenarios would contribute to regional train transit volumes that exceed capacity on BART toward the East Bay and on BART south of the Baylands. The contribution of the Baylands development would represent less than 2% of the forecasted increase in transit demand." 2%? And it takes it over what they can handle? Is that what I'm reading there?
So, let me clarify that a little bit. So, I think the key word is to contribute. So, it contributes to it. So, from today's BART ridership, what projected for in the future, that incremental, that difference, that addition, that... Everything that's going on, whether it's new riders, new development, all throughout the Bay Area, that's going to push BART over capacity by 2030 or for this forecast for 2030.
Okay.
And so, the project itself is contributing to that over capacity, but it only represents less than 2% of that impact.
Okay. So, yeah.
So, yeah, it's just nuances in the words.
Right. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I was looking at the numbers, and I don't know about that.
I was thinking that, too.
Yeah. So, Caltrain, I certainly understand that one. Down at the very bottom, where on page 8, where it says mitigation measure 4.0-7, says "requires payment of fair share contribution to the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency for capital costs needed to address increased ridership demand from the proposed Baylands development." Before you answer that, though, I wanted to kind of go to... This is in the... This is from the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. And Allison, it's good that you're here.
What page number is that?
It'd be 218. Page 218 of...
Traffic Incirculation.
Yeah. Allison, you made in here a comment that says, "Explain that SEQA goes beyond the geographic boundaries of individual municipalities, and SEQA requires impacts to be analyzed." Says, "Unfortunately, you cannot enforce mitigation measures that are beyond the limits of Brisbane." How does that relate to this... Going back to page 8, mitigation measure saying it requires payment, and this is outside of Brisbane. So, it almost seems counterintuitive, I guess.
Right. Well, as you correctly stated, SEQA doesn't have a geographic boundary. When you are analyzing the impacts of a project, you're looking at whatever those impacts might be, and they might happen in San Francisco, they might happen, you know, to your south, they might happen anywhere, and you still are obligated to analyze them. SEQA also requires you to impose mitigation measures, all feasible mitigation, and so you're always going to identify mitigation measures that would mitigate impacts. But then sometimes, ultimately, you might conclude that those mitigation measures are infeasible for some reason, and that happens later in the process when you approve a project. But when you're imposing a mitigation measure that you can't enforce, because it would have to be enforced by another agency, often you'll end up concluding that that mitigation... That that impact is significant and unavoidable, because the mitigation measure simply can't be imposed by your agency. So, you still have a responsibility to identify mitigation measures, but you might end up concluding that, you know, San Francisco might impose that, but, you know, it might not be feasible. I think, although I'm not sure if that was the conclusion on that one, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. In relation to this mitigation measure, the city of Brisbane can in fact require the app developer to pay the fee to San Francisco Muni. What you cannot do is require Muni to actually use that money to mitigate the impacts that the project created.
That's correct, yeah.
I think that's a distinction. I think the first remark that Mr. Conway brought up regarding paying the fair share towards Muni was, is there's an underlying piece there that Muni has said, "Yeah, we've noticed that impact, and this is what it's going to be, and we want you to get your developer paid for, and we'll be happy to take that check and buy those cars." And I think Allison's original remarks from the Planning Commission was directly related to things such as improvements required in an intersection in another jurisdiction, such as in Daly City or in San Francisco, where, like, hey, to mitigate that, you ought to put in another turn lane, and you ought to widen this, and you ought to restripe that, but you can't require that adjoining agency to do that. But if... But I think...
Yeah, no, it's a good clarification.
But if Daly City said, "Why, yes, in fact, we have to restripe that intersection, we have to change the signaling, we have to put in a new lane, here's the cost for it, have your developer write us a check," we could require that.
Right. There's a... It's true. There's a difference between when there's a program existing into which you could pay a fair share, and like Randy is saying, when you just have an improvement that you've identified in your traffic study that would mitigate an impact. So, yeah, there's a distinction there. We could certainly require the developer to pay their fair share contribution for their percentage of the impact into an existing program.
Okay. All right.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, that makes it more clear. Thank you. Let's see. If, you know, you have any questions that you want to...
Chime in on.
Ask, yeah. I mean, just speak up, because... Yeah, and those acknowledging the unavoidable adverse impacts would still result... We have quite a few of those in this...
Yeah.
Unavoidable, that was on page 12. It was just a comment on what you were saying, Allison. I wanted to go to page 216 of this, which is still the minutes of the Planning Commission. And Johnson-Scharfman, the UPC project applicant, mentioned in there that the community proposal has almost twice the greenhouse gas emissions resulting from additional trips compared to the DSP. But when I'm reading in that, that seems like to be a very inaccurate statement. Is that correct? Because it says that in ours, the mitigation measure was so negligible and negligible that it said there is no mitigation, they dropped it, right? Is that... Am I correct in that?
Yeah. There was a new model adopted by Bay Area QMD and the state following the distribution of the draft EIR. So, we went back and redid all the GHG impacts, air quality impacts, based on the newer model, which dropped some impacts to below a level of significance. The issue that Mr. Scharfman was raising, and one of the issues at the Planning Commission hearings, was the way that in particular GHG, greenhouse gas emissions, were stated. Greenhouse gas emissions based on Bay Area air quality management district standards are huns of carbon dioxide per service population, as opposed to just total tonnage. And that is a measure that the AQMD uses to get at mitigation for even small projects, and also to recognize that some very large projects may have a lot of mitigation inherent in them.
HMD, could we use the word...
Air Quality Management.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay. I try... Yeah, I try to stay away from a lot of acronyms.
The acronym, yeah, okay.
But the Air Quality Management District uses that. So, one of the things that we did look at is that the total amount of greenhouse gas emissions from the non-residential community prepared plan, that's roughly the same development intensity, is more than you get from the developer-sponsored plan. There's a couple of reasons for that that are discussed in the staff report in traffic. One, where you have residential and housing in proximity to each other, there's a possibility that somebody will both live in...
Residential and housing.
Housing and employment within the Baylands. There's a chance somebody would work and live there. It's about 5% in the case of the Baylands.
Small chance.
If you have all employment or all housing, to go home to work, you have to leave the site. But the other issue besides that, because the difference is actually fairly small, that 5% internal capture, is that in the community-prepared plan, there is a lot of retail square footage. And in order to get market for that retail square footage, it's almost like you've got a regional mall sitting there, and it takes traffic from a long distance away. So, it's not just the residential versus non-residential that's driving air quality emissions and GHG emissions in the CPP, Community Prepared Plan scenarios, but it's all that retail bringing customers from long, long distances away. So, that affects vehicle miles traveled, it affects air quality, it affects greenhouse gas emissions.
I have a follow-up to that.
Go ahead.
So, on page 256, it's like the PowerPoint slides, at the bottom of that GHG considerations, so it said, "Total greenhouse gas emissions highest in DSP/CPPV scenarios." Then, like, on the next page, showing that it's less than significant, and then the CPP/CPPV is more significant. So, it just... And I know that the model changed, but it just confused me that on one page, it's the highest, and then on the next page, it's less than significant.
I think, again, what that's getting at is what Lloyd mentioned, the total volume versus the per capita, because if you have a housing component, and you have the same number of jobs under the DSP as the community plan, and then you add 4,000 units, the per capita in that... What you're basing the calculation, you have much higher population.
I see, okay.
And therefore, per capita...
So, it's just a bigger divisor.
Exactly.
The same amount of gas, you're just dividing it among more population.
More bodies.
So, you're saying that each population, each unit, is creating less greenhouse gas when actually it's creating the same greenhouse gas.
That's why the volume is... Volume's higher, but on a per capita basis, it's lower, just because of the more bodies there.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Terry?
Not for me.
Okay. On page 13, under Noise Impacts, just on the first paragraph, it says, "The developer-sponsored plan and a developer-sponsored plan variant scenarios propose residential development, which is considered noise-sensitive, as close as 50 feet from the Caltrain tracks." And it says, "The DSP and DSP-V scenarios also propose hotels just west of 101 and a school south of Ice House Hill." Now, the school site, that's still in the Baylands, right? So, the Baylands is considered Bay Shore School District and not Brisbane School District, so would that site be considered Bay Shore School District also, because it's part of the Baylands? It would be, okay. I just wanted to get clear on that. It's like, well, it'd be... We're talking right... Kind of right next to the firehouse, or where the current garden is, or the growing place, greenhouses for San Bernamount Watch. On page 15, under Noise Policy, Key Noise Issues, I just wanted to... And I didn't read it anywhere, but we kind of have some data with the pile driving on the Tunnel Avenue Bridge, and I remember that was really loud, you know? And I mean, it was close, but I mean, that was like bam, bam, you know? Did we ever collect any data from that, as far as what the DBA was, per slam? I know it's pretty loud.
No, sir, we did not.
Because, you know, I think, you know, in here, we're talking about the noise sensitivity of Brisbane being in a bowl, and the acoustical sound, that really accentuated it, you know? So, if traditional pile drives are going to be used, if we, you know, eventually approve something here, then it's going to be quite interesting. I know we talked about, Randy, I think we talked about noise buffers, on how they would use cranes and these big, kind of like blanket-type things. Can you...
Exactly, sure. Yeah, that's what they are. They're curtains.
Yeah.
They're just big hanging blankets that absorb some of the sound.
Yeah. Okay. And how would that work? Can you just explain how that works?
It just creates a barrier, is what it is. It's like being on the other side of the rug that your mom is beating out on the... Hanging out of the clothesline. If you're on the one side of it where she's hitting it, it's pretty loud, but if you're on the other side of that rug where she's dusting it off, the noise gets mitigated.
So, it absorbs the noise and...
Yes, sir.
It reflects. All right.
proverbial throwing the wet blanket on it.
Okay, let's see.
So, to follow up on that, and I probably will ask this again, so the noise studies that were used in the EIR for the Brisbane Baylands project did not look at the specific topography of Brisbane for the noise amplification ratios?
Actually, it did. What... Under normal circumstances, what you would do in a noise study on flat land where there's buildings intervening topography, is you would assume reduction in noise over and above just distance. In Brisbane, that does not occur, because it's like an amphitheater. Everybody has a great view of the Baylands, a great view of the orchestra, and there is nothing intervening. So, the noise study that was done eliminates any reduction in noise because of intervening buildings and topography.
But it only doesn't... It just assumes that there's no acoustical shielding, not that there's acoustical amplification.
Yeah, there was nothing that we found that would actually identify amplification that sounded a bit louder than...
That was my question.
Let's see if I have any other. I have very much more after this is it. And maybe Lloyd will just want to kind of just get some comments to talk a little bit about this. But let's talk about air quality. Under existing conditions, the first paragraph reads, "Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMED, and California Air Resources Board, CARB, operate a regional air quality monitoring network that measures the ambient concentrations of the seven criteria of air pollutants. The nearest air quality monitoring station to the Baylands is located on Arkansas Street in San Francisco, approximately 4.2 miles northeast of the Baylands. The Bay Area is a non-attainment status, exceeding applicable state or federal air quality standards for the following air pollutants: ozone, PM, and..."
PM-10 and 2.5. Particulate matter. 10 refers to 10 microns or smaller, and 2.5 micron.
2.5 micron, okay. Among the air pollutants that are regulated, particulate matter, 10 microns and particulate matter, 2.5 micron represents a serious ongoing health hazard. Exceedances of the state of PM-10 standards have routinely occurred in the San Francisco Bay Area and including Brisbane. Can you talk a little bit about that exactly? What and how often? You know, what are we talking about here on exceeding? Because particulate matter kind of relates into respiratory illnesses and stuff like that.
It's respiratory illnesses, and what we've found over time is that the 2.5, they're even smaller particulates, are more dangerous ultimately. The federal standards are laid out, they're based on a day, and averaged over a day. And even if you have routinely one day a year exceeding standards, you're in non-attainment. And I can check the EIR to get you the actual numbers. But it's not like in some places in the Central Valley, you have 50, 100 days a year, I mean, some really large amounts. It is less, but it's no less, not dangerous, unhealthful in the Bay Area, because those micron, the really small particulates, when you start adding to it along a freeway, toxic air contaminants from diesel contaminants, and some of those are these small particulates, it does add up to a serious problem.
Just so people know, the size of 10 microns, 2.5 microns, we're talking about the average hair thickness is about 40 microns.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about 10 times or four times smaller than your average hair and much less, so...
It's dust particles so small that when you breathe them in, all the filtering devices that we as humans are given in our noses and our breathing are too small to catch them. So, the really small particulates, the 10, you know, the smaller the 10, smaller the 2.5, go straight into the lungs.
And how... I think the, the, the greatest area of problems with PM ten and two point five is actually not a major metropolitan area, it's the Central Valley. Is where? The Central Valley. Well, Central. And some of the, the ag counties. Is that due to the farming and? Because of farming and dust. Yeah. And so, yeah, I always find it amazing because you think about Southern California being, you know, so smoggy or even, you know, as you come up over the Altamont Pass, we're going to get into the farmland, it's going to be nice and clear, and then you can't see the Sierras on the east side because there is a major dust problem in that valley. And one of the things that the San Joaquin, uh, Air Pollution Control District has been working on is dealing with these PM, you know, particulate matter. So Central Valley is probably some of the worst areas, Southern California, um, in terms of numbers of days will be more significant than, than the Bay Area because you don't have the large scale grading and agricultural activities and dust generating activities that some other areas have. But still, even just driving on pavement, cars driving on pavement, kicking up dust doing that, um, become major issues. Do, you know what, um, maybe some of the studies from health departments kind of look at, you know, are there higher incidence, uh, of asthma and respiratory related illnesses in the Central Valley versus the, the Bay Area? There are, yeah. It, per, per population, it won't be total numbers, but, um, PM ten, two point five are associated with, with asthma problems, breathing problems, um, and so you see higher incidences in the, in the Central Valley and other areas where you have high amounts of, of particulate matter. Even worse than LA, huh? Even worse than LA. That was, you know, one of the, one of the few, few areas actually worse than Los Angeles in, in the United States, but it's surprising, it, it, it surprised me that the problem is as significant as it is in the, uh, Central Valley. And unlike most air quality problems, it's, it's not getting better at the same rate. You can see in Southern California, even Bay Area, air quality today much better than it was in the seventies or eighties. You crop pollens probably counted into that also, right? So. If, if they're small enough particles. Yeah. A lot of, a lot of pollen is, is a lot bigger, is bigger than the ten. Yeah. All right, well, that's, that's all the questions I.
So I have a follow-up on that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Brisbane's long had a dust problem with the quarry and the fine silica dust that's come out of the quarry. And because we don't have a, um, monitoring station close enough, we see the clouds, we get the lovely sunsets, um, we see the sunsets, you know, not necessarily due to the quarry, but due to the dust, um, you can see the dust just going down Highway one oh one from our soils operation and the mud that they track onto the freeway and the freeway mud that's picked up. And when you drive that every day multiple times like I do, you see that, and we have not mitigated that. And one of my concerns and one of the studies that I would like to see is what the intention of the developers, um, in a plan to move all the monstrosity piles of dust, of dirt, from one side to the other to be able to do their Title twenty-four closure and to do whatever underlying capping and, um, grading that they're going to do, what kind of dust generation they are going to expect and what kind of pollutants and where that's really addressed in the EIR as far as health risks that are going to go on for perhaps thirty years, um, and how that can be best mitigated under any of these scenarios and what scenario would have the least amount of impact as far as dust creation, as far as getting to a development process. And if we're going to rate greenhouse gases based on population, I would think that you'd also want to rate greenhouse, uh, dust, um, pollutants, um, on population exposed. And if we're going to have, if there were housing to be put there, that while, when the housing is built, if the other side has not been already remediated and brought down to the level of, of being capped and completed, then what kind of, of stress are we going to be putting those populations? Um, because I know in my personal home, I have lots more dust that never gets cleaned up than people in other communities. And that's just from what we have ongoing site activity and limited quarry, which is nothing compared to what we had forty years ago going on in the quarry and what we're potentially looking at with the Baylands development, what would be going on, on the Baylands. So I have, you know, grave concerns, you know, sitting on the, uh, Baylands, uh, committee, the citizens committee.
The CAG.
Um, the CAG, yes. Um, not to use acronyms. Um, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the size of particles and that the smaller the particles, the less even, not that the body doesn't have defenses for those small particles, but once they get in, the body can't get rid of them because they're too small to be expelled. And so it's a really dangerous thing, and we have those pollutants coming in from one oh one, from the dust and the, and the diesel fumes from that, also from the Caltrain tracks. That picks up a lot, the steel on steel, and those particles become magnetized, um, and become even worse. So there's a lot of air quality things that I think aren't just related to greenhouse gases, but more dust and pollutants that are kicked up by the human activities that we're looking at. So I have concerns of those. Not that there's, it's not really a question, I guess, but I, I would like to see where that is, is, um, really brought out to the public as far as what kind of dust we're expected and how, I, I know they would try to mitigate it, but.
Yeah, the, the air quality section of the EIR, of the Environmental Impact Report has an analysis of dust generation that occurs during construction, during, uh, any kind of ground disturbance. So, uh, the issue is, uh, it's measured on a daily basis on, on how many pounds per day are being generated. Um, and so that is analyzed in the, in the EIR. I think the other issue that you've alluded to is what is in the soils as the dust gets kicked up. And so part of what will happen and going back, one, one, um, issue that we discussed at the last two meetings was, um, dealing with contaminants in the soils. And so part of what needs to be done as part of the remedial action plans is to ensure that, uh, existing contaminants in the soils are not kicked up in the dust that's occurring when grading is occurring. So part of that will occur starting with the remedial action plan on how do we make sure that, um, grading activities are not essentially disturbing contaminated soils? And then there are a series of just your normal, any kind of moving of soil, um, from the initial disturbing the soil to break it up, to move it, loading it onto a truck, bulldozing or pushing it, there's a lot of activities in a grading operation that encounter dust. If you're loading it on conveyors, which is not the plan right now, uh, the loading and unloading off a conveyor generates dust. The Air Quality Management District and the state have a series of technologies that are used to reduce the amount of dust, and the simplest one is putting water on it. Keeping the soils that are being moved and soils that are disturbed or lying bare, keeping them moist so that, um, just the sheer weight of moist soil does, you can, just by watering, I think twice a day, you eliminate half of the, uh, particulate matter, but there's still half of it being generated. So there's another series of technologies dealing with.
Well, and, and we have an extraordinarily large amount of soil there. And I know that, you know, the, um, the project that's going on now, the soil recycling and stockpiling that's going on right now, um, their contention is that that is clean soil. And so it wouldn't have contaminants. Um, I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but, you know, that is certainly the contention at this point that it's clean soil that is being, but we, we don't have very, um, rigorous Bay Area Air Quality Management District testing currently, um, because we have, you know, obvious dust coming off of that site, even with the current limited amount of, of activity out there. And then on page sixteen of our staff report, you have that the, that Clarkal, uh, mentioned the testing station that is for Bay Area Air Quality Management District is on Arkansas Street. And then also that the ambient, um, toxic air contaminant is at sixteenth and Arkansas Street. Are those both at the same location because they're described differently in this report?
And I don't know that answer right off. I will check that.
And, and it would seem that with the, certainly, once a project and a landfill closure and a grading project, that we would certainly want something that's closer than four miles away that's not in our wind pattern to be monitoring whatever is done out there.
Ready?
Um, that's it on that, yes.
Okay. Still got technically about what, uh, twenty-five minutes left to this study session. Uh, not that we have to use it, but is there any, Anya, uh, can you give a microphone to, uh, Anya, you don't have to stand up or anything, Anya, unless you want to.
Yeah, I, um, I've also wondered about the Bi-County Transportation Study because of traffic, and I know the impact, I'm going to talk more about that, the regional impact. Uh, but I found that, uh, the calculations in that Bi-County report, it's page twenty-four. Um, it lists the cemetery sites, uh, for future large size growth assumptions. And for the cemetery site of Brisbane Baylands, it includes eight hundred residential units. That's the assumption, eight hundred units of housing plus seven point ha, uh, five million commercial research and development, entertainment, hotel office and other uses. So this assumption, that Bi-County study evidently was assuming eight hundred housing units, and I'm just wondering where that came from, that assumption, back in, uh, two thousand and ten?
Um, the information was provided by the developer to the, um, TA who provided the, uh, the information when they prepared that document in two thousand and ten.
At, at that time, as I recall, their, their plan had just a half of Baylands, and it did not include housing. And, and this table does have a footnote that says subsequently, the developer has proposed forty-four hundred units, but the calculations in that Bi-County study did not include that. But it did include eight hundred housing units, and so that leads me to wonder, you know, how much you should take that as public information, public data, since it is acknowledged that it came from the developer. Um, the other thing about the Bi-County, of course, is the Geneva extension, and I'm wondering if you're worried about that because, and I'm going to talk about that, but, but the Bi-County study gives us a proportionate burden of paying for that. Of course, it'll mostly be in Brisbane, the Geneva extension, right? Hundred and twenty-six million dollars was Brisbane's estimated cost back in two thousand and ten, when this was repaired. So I'm just wondering, the, all these things that are not part of the EIR, there, there is something that pre-exists and is, is assumed by somebody at least to be the reality, and San Francisco is certainly operating on the basis of that. I don't know. But this sort of worries me a little bit.
That's a, anybody care to comment on, uh, that?
So, so one of the just intrinsically unsatisfying things about transportation planning is that we're never starting with facts that we know exist today, and we make a decision on them today, and they exist tomorrow. Much of the problem with transportation planning is that frequently we are looking out twenty-five years, and models don't like you telling me that things change every day. So you, with every model, and much like what happened in the transportation planning for this model, you have to pick a point in time and say, at this point in time, these are the best assumptions, this is the best data we have, and so we run the model based on that. And then when a decision, and what you have to recognize is that then when a decision is made, you have to go back and run the model again, validating it with the project that you've approved and the other known developments that have happened. So, yeah, I mean, I completely understand the concern of looking at it and saying, well, somebody said there's eight hundred units and that's, where'd that come from? Well, it is a different now, absolutely, it's a different number. And so the results of that and the size of the projects and the cost of the projects and the fair share of the projects were good if that had been the project that was approved. But the final number is going to be what the city council does approve. And then, then we've got to go back and re-run it, rerun it, and we've got to go back and sit with our partners and say, okay, we, this is the project we approved, this is the square footage that we have, this is how much housing, if any, of we have, let's look at what your projects were. Then we recalculate those costs and then we re-figure out with a fair share. So it is an iterative process. You, you can't just do it once because you would always come up with the wrong answer if you did it that way.
In relation to the eight hundred units, the, the traffic study that was for the Baylands Environmental Impact Report included, includes the entirety of the applicant's proposal, all forty-four hundred units, all however many million square feet. And that, the traffic generated by that was loaded onto the proposed system from the Bi-County study. So what you see in the, uh, traffic study of the EIR section four N is the entirety of Baylands traffic along with all the other known projects in the area loaded onto the existing roadway system as conditioned with all the other projects and the Bi-County improvements as they're currently proposed.
I want to go back to what Anya said in terms of the cost for, for something like the Geneva extension. Is that number accurate, the amount that it would cost to build something like that out? Over a hundred and twenty million dollars? I know we're projecting.
Well, I can't recall the number or the exact table, and I can't fact-check exactly what Anya said or what.
Does it sound right to you?
That number sounds to me like Brisbane's total share for Geneva Avenue and Candlestick Interchange. It is more, is more what the number sounds like. And yes, that sounds about right. I think that the Candlestick Interchange, if you put me on the spot, I'll tell you it's a quarter of a billion dollars. And Geneva Avenue Extension, I'll say it's fifty to seventy-five. So you add those two together and then you look at percentage shares, and, and so, yeah, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty, that number sounds about what the Baylands project situation would be. And if you look at, um, the last report on infrastructure the developer provided to us, which was just for the transportation infrastructure, including those two projects, the roadways, the remediation, the utilities, he was, he was estimating in, in the remediation, the Title twenty-seven landfill cap, he was looking at a one point two, a one point three billion dollar total nut just to do that, just, just so he could get the ground ready to build something. So, yeah, that, that, that number's a right order of magnitude for those projects.
So, like, how do you finance something like that? It just seems like.
So, can I jump in here? Because I, I have sensed, um, from a couple of questions that there is this kind of underlying concern that the current residents of Brisbane are going to be somehow on the hook for the cost for the capital improvements that are needed out in the Baylands. And, and I think we can categorically say that, that, that would not be the case. The, the development itself, whatever it may be, will drive the kinds of improvements that are needed for, for one, and secondly, it will have to somehow or another carry the cost of that. And I think Randy spoke, uh, very, um, directly and, and, and I think very, made a very important point earlier, that the, the mix of revenues that support these types of projects has really changed a lot in the last ten years. Um, certainly in the last five years with, when redevelopment was taken away, it was a, a major funding source within, uh, you know, the. major funding source within, you know, from cities. So the development of this type is a lot more challenging because of just the, the capital carrying cost of, of the infrastructure that's going to be needed. And it's going to be a definite challenge for, for the developer in terms of any kind of project they have out there. But I think, you know, I think Clark, you may recall that, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago, I think you were, I believe, on the council, and we had a session with Kaiser Marston, and that council made it very, very clear to, to that consultant, who is still our consultant, that, you know, they did not want the city to be on the hook for any expenses relative to this development. So I, I just want to reiterate that. As we move forward, while it's going to be very challenging, you know, the idea that the city's current budget, or the current tax base is somehow going to support this development is just not the case.
So what about, like, for intersections that are not within the Baylands, but that will be, like, the level of service will drop to a point that they need, those intersections will need improvements? Will, will the developer be tasked with financing those improvements? Or because they're not within the Baylands, they're within our city limits, not on the developer's property rights, would that fall on as our responsibility?
So, and I'm going to look at Allison when I say this, and she can shut me down if I'm continuing to play attorney, because I'm not licensed to do that. But an outside entity could certainly willingly encourage us and accept us to require the developer to make those off-site, out-of municipal limit improvements. But we just, but, as we mentioned earlier, we just can't force those outside entities to do that.
Is your question that if it's in the city of Brisbane, but outside, then the city can require the developer to pay for that improvement?
Okay. Those are all my questions for this study session.
Okay. Lori, we're, we've kind of gone through the council portion and was asking citizens if they have any questions and stuff, so that's kind of where we're at.
Can I have one follow-up there, once?
Sure. All right. Thank you. Sorry, my apologies for being late, but my normal childcare this week is on, she's on vacation, so I had to wait for my husband to get home. But I did manage to watch while cooking dinner, did watch a little bit from home, so I caught snippets of what the questions were, so. Terry, I'll let you continue.
So on the Geneva Extension project, any interchange that affects 101 would have to go through Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, correct, to be approved for a project?
So the approval would go to the owner, and the owner of US 101 is Caltrans, but presumably there would be some funding that would be sourced from Metropolitan Transportation, because MTC is, in our area, they are the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, and in that role, they are the conduit through which federal and state dollars come. So they would be requested to provide funding. They, they do have a pseudo sort of approval thing, because part of what they do as they approve projects, they look at whether projects have been submitted or in a planning document that they refer to as a regional transportation plan. Part of the reason that's important is, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier, where we discussed the fact that our area is generally in a non-attainment zone for ozone and for the PM tens and for the PM two-point-fives. So they want to make sure that the, the projects that are being proposed do not exacerbate that situation. But the ultimate approval for both the design and the construction and, and the modification of an interchange on a US 101 is under the authority of Caltrans.
But, but MTC, we have currently, I know, a minimum of three projects. One is the Candlestick Project, the Geneva Extension Project, and the Sierra Point Project, all on MTC's Plan 2040 list for prospective inclusion as, for funding. And I believe none of them are considered high priority, and that only the Geneva Harvey has, or the Geneva Extension has a minimal amount of funds that are earmarked maybe in 2030 for study, not for construction. And I think that's what's in the MTC current plan, if I-
I think you are exceptionally correct on, on your recollection of what's in the current RTP, and, and the reason those projects are considered very low priority right now is that there's not a development approved that they would serve. So there's no need, this is not a build-in, they will come-
I take it back, there's also the extension of-
Lagoon Way.
Guadalupe Canyon all the way out, and, you know, that-
Right, and connecting-
That would make, I mean, if all of those were ever, you know, approved, it would make us freeway exit central for, you know, for freeways in-
And those have been in the-
Interchanges. They've been on the books for years-
Since the early 2000s, exactly.
I want to say, and my memory could be completely wrong, is that the Geneva Extension was listed as five hundred and forty billion, billion, something like that. I forget, I, I, I'll, I'll take it back, because I don't-
I think we've got too many zeros there, ma'am.
I, I-
I think we've got at least one too many zeros there.
Maybe it was fifty-four billion.
Fifty-four, yeah, I, I could agree to that.
So, and so that's why it was one of the non-essential things on the MTC list.
Right, I think, because I think the last time we got any funding for that, and, and the reason we received funding for it is that we were doing, and this is just traffic planning central here with all the projects going on, and with having, having a county on the other side. But the last bit of study we did was to look at what would happen if a Bay Shore multimodal station was built, and to really better understand the geometrics of how that was all going to connect, because it's really easy to draw these in plan view, if you will, to take an X-Y line. So, yeah, of course, that road would connect here, and this would connect to that. But then, you know, as Mayor Lou will point out, sometimes when you stand out and you walk in the field and you say, oh, my goodness, there's a Z dimension that we need to consider here, too, like, you know, how do these big freeways come down, and what do we do with trains, and how do we cross things under? So that was the last study we did, was to try and get a better understanding of if and when we do Geneva Avenue Extension, how would that best fit with a, with a multimodal project, and how would we fit things like a BRT in there, and a best location for a Caltrans station?
Okay. Actually, we had one-
I don't know what format we were doing, but-
Yeah, well, we, it was basically for the, for the council, but then we-
We were done.
Okay, so can I ask my questions then? And then bring-
Are we supposed to be adjourning this meeting at seven fifteen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so-
Well, see, yeah, this person had a question. If you want to ask yours, you know-
Sure, why don't you ask your question? Sure.
All right. So I'm just going to keep this super quick, because I'm planning on making a comment in the main session. My name is Adina Levin, with Friends of Caltrans, which is a nonprofit focusing on sustainable transportation on the Peninsula Corridor from San Francisco through San Jose, and I just wanted to quickly comment on something that Councilmember asked and staff had commented upon in terms of a greenhouse gas measurement, whether it be measured in tons of greenhouse gas emissions or per person. And that was to bring out that since the CIR has started to be worked on, sequel law has actually changed, and the implementation of the changes are still rolling out and will be official. You know, cities can choose to adopt the new rules anytime from now to about two and a half years from now. And they change the way the transportation impact and is measured from level of service to vehicle miles traveled per person, per capita. And that, the, the reason, and, and the vehicle miles traveled per capita correlates really closely to the greenhouse gas emissions and to the pollution. And the reason that they're doing this per capita is that they realized that if you're measuring the total pollution but not per person, what you're doing is encouraging development to be much, much, much more spread out, because you can have the same amount of development in a larger area, but if things are very spread out, you wind up with more per person. So looking at that greenhouse gas emissions per person is something that is encouraging infill development near public transportation, which results in less emissions per person. So that's just a little clarification in response to a comment that you made. And I'll, I'll talk more about how other cities in this region are doing to reduce driving and vehicle miles and traffic impact and things that Brisbane may be interested in, in taking on from best practices in, in the region.
Great. Thank you. Look forward to that presentation. Okay, so I guess it's my turn to ask some questions then? Okay, great. So, and my apologies if any of this is repetitive, I wasn't able to hear all of what was said before. But, so, the staff report states that the cumulative-
Are you in staff report, or are you in the-
I'm in-
Planning Commission report?
Sorry. The, well, it is a staff report, but it's a staff report to the Planning Commission.
What page?
This is on page one eighty-four. It states that the cumulative traffic conditions would exceed the applicable level of service standards along Bay Shore and at the freeway interchanges, even without any development within the Baylands. So my question is, if the conclusion is that the levels of service standards would go up even with no development, then what, what are the implications of that? What, what, I mean, I imagine that that has been the conclusion that has been reached in all of those other adjacent developments, so then, but those developments did go forward nonetheless. So if the levels would already go up, and, you know, that, that means that there were, there wasn't any mitigation measure, or maybe there were mitigation measures in, in those projects. If you could talk about, you know, what, what that means in terms of the process, when a project exceeds the level of service even without being built, without anything happening, you know, what, what does that mean from our decision-making?
I'll take a first crack. So, let's go back to Los An, Los Angeles for a moment, we'll take a Los Angeles example, because everything can be worse in Los Angeles. And in Los Angeles, I did a lot of work in Santa Monica, when I lived in Los Angeles. In Santa Monica, the traffic was so bad that every single, almost every single intersection, entire city was even failing under existing conditions.
You can hear you fine, but is the microphone on?
Is the micro, is that?
That's better.
Oh, that's better, I'm sorry. So, for example, in, in parts of LA, traffic is so bad that almost all intersections are operating level service E or F, even during existing conditions. You, you add on project, you add on related development projects on top of that, and you continue to cumulatively impact these intersections. So fast forward up to Brisbane, and what's happening is you look at Schlegel Lock, you look at Executive, the Redevelopment Executive Park, you look at Candlestick Point Hunter's Point, you look at the new Sunnydale Hope SF Development, and all of those projects, plus all the regional growth that's occurring, and putting trips onto Brisbane's roadway network, that's that cumulative impact, the cumulative without Baylands impact is actually pushing at, pushing us to level service E or F on, on Bay Shore Boulevard. So essentially, what we're looking at, and I think this is one of the challenges, I think, that we've had with a lot of these development projects occurring or, or going into, you know, project approval process in this area, and what the Bay County study from, even though it's a bit old, tried to address is some of these, you know, fair share agreements for funding. So what we're looking at is, yes, Brisbane Baylands will actually impact certain locations, both from an existing plus project perspective, also in the cumulative, in the future perspective. But we're, what we're seeing is that because there's so much more other development going on, that even without Baylands, we're actually seeing impact. So cumulatively, we actually have, you know, cumulatively, Baylands is contributing X amount, Candlestick Point Hunter's Point is contributing X amount, but a lot, all of these projects were done, were done kind of siloed, they were done, you know, they were done individually. And so what we're looking at here in this study, in this EIR, is what is Baylands' impact on top of all the cumulative growth. So I don't know if that totally answers your question, but what we're looking at here is that Baylands will try, for impacted locations, will try and bring that level of service back down to an acceptable level, and we've looked at feasible alternatives to, to do that. I don't have it right in front of me exactly, all the other improvements that were being made by other, other projects. I think, for example, I think like Blenkin and Tunnel, there was a signalization, and that either came out of Schlegel Lock, or that came out of Candlestick Point Hunter's Point. I actually don't know the answer, maybe Randy or Don, in terms of how any of these improvements have actually been built. You know, Schlegel Lock is moving forward, no, he's shaking his head, none of them have been built. So that, that is remain to be seen.
Okay. So what you're saying is, is that if nothing gets built, the traffic will exceed the level of service E? But if something gets built out at the Baylands, it actually could go down and be, the traffic could be better?
Well, it, it will get worse, but there are, there are identified mitigation measures from Baylands to actually to make, to make the post-mitigation better than, than pre-mitigation, or to an acceptable level of service. Within, and we also were discussing earlier, within the city of Brisbane, especially along Bay Shore Boulevard and some other locations, Brisbane can force that developer to make those roadway improvements, and will actually bring that level of service down to an acceptable level after mitigation.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that, too? Isn't in our general plan, though, we need, we have to have LOS Level C, except for one, the one intersection, San Bruno and Bay Shore, is that correct? So if traffic, the question is, if traffic increases regardless, won't we have to address those problems when they arise anyway? Not just, we just wait until the Bay, because they're already going to fail, right? All these, a lot of these intersections are already going to get really bad regardless of the Baylands. And in our general plan, we, we maintain Level C or better. So won't we have already mitigated or attempted, started to try and mitigate those separate from whatever the Baylands might bring?
So let me try and parse that out, ma'am, because I, I think it speaks to, to kind of what Mayor, Mayor Lou was getting at, and I, and I think what you, what you're getting at is that, and, and here's the, the challenging part, is that we look at background growth, background growth barring any other project. Barring projects in San Francisco, barring our project, traffic's going to get worse. Traffic is going to get to the point where our intersections are not going to meet our specified level of service in there. And, and much of that, I'm not going to say all of it, because I haven't gone back and looked at all the EIRs from the, from the outside developments, but much of that is just because we're densifying, we're having kids, or kids are staying at home, the economy's getting better. So, but then, in, in answer to Councilmember Davis's, when you can't attribute that to anyone directly, if you've said in your general plan that you want an intersection to be at level of service C, and you can't pin that on anyone, then if you wanted to get that level of service corrected, that means you've got to do it yourself, barring a major development proposal being approved, where you can exact something from the developer and say, you're the primary trigger here, so we'll make you do it. Does that help?
Right. Yeah, because theoretically, before the Bay, before we're even crossing that bridge with the Baylands, presumably all of these intersections are going to be failing. So, like, we, we would have already, we're already requiring ourselves to fix that or mitigate that, whether it's on us or we're pointing the finger at somebody else. But, so does that take into consideration, like, let's say we address those things, are those, all those intersections still going to be in trouble? Like, you, you see what I mean? So if we would have already maybe addressed those before the Baylands, would all those same intersections need attention again?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what happens essentially is when you take-
Like a nice basic answer.
Yeah. When you take all those projects in San Francisco, Daly City, elsewhere that are approved, you take just the normal increases in background traffic, if nothing is built on the Baylands, twenty years from now, your roadway levels of service standards will not be met. You will, all those projects are eventually going to run out of mitigation measures that, that can be applied. So even with all the mitigation measures you can throw at the streets, there's more traffic that will be generated over the next twenty years, and there's physical place to put improvements to meet your standards.
So then, is the, if, if there is a development at the Baylands, is that an opportunity for the city to be able to, you know, have the developer pay for those improvements that would bring the level of service down?
It would certainly be appropriate, because we could demonstrate that, if we can demonstrate that the development that this council chooses to approve causes those level of services to not function per our general plan, yes, we could require the developer to pay these.
Okay. Should we- And I think at this point, it's seven twenty, so let's adjourn the, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't-
Yes, we did.
Oh, my apologies. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Can we see that she's, she makes the first public comment?
Okay, we'll be sure then, have that. Okay, great, so let's adjourn until seven thirty. Thank you.